The Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, November 3rd at seven, or sorry, 6:00 PM will come to order. Katie, will you call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price, Holland, Genowine, Helwig, Cheeseman, Murrah, Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from October 20, 25 special meeting, the October 20, 25 regular meeting, and the October 27th, 2025 special meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Motion to approve by Counselor Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Murrah. Any other discussion on the minutes? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Minutes are approved. Adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, are there any changes or a motion to adopt?
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda by Counselor Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Genowine. Any other discussion on the agenda? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Agenda is hereby adopted. Under visitors to be heard, for visitors to be heard, if anyone wants to speak on the consent agenda, which is item number seven, we ask that you speak during visitors to be heard. For any items not on the agenda, visitors to be heard may speak. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. Public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item, and after the subject has been announced and explained by staff, any citizen who wishes to speak for any agenda item may speak for five minutes, and public testimony will then be closed and the topic given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current item unless unanimous consent from the council or question from a council member may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. At this moment, I know we have a couple proclamations, but do we have any visitors to be heard for any items not on the agenda? We do have a small business Saturday declaration that's going to be read by the Vermillionary Chamber Development Company. Katie, if you want to come up?
Okay. Good evening, esteemed city council members and all present. My name is Katie Heine, and I'm the Vermillionary Chamber and Development Company, Chamber of Commerce Manager, and thank you for hearing and considering this proclamation tonight. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of the American economy, representing roughly 99.9% of all U.S. businesses, employing nearly half of the American workforce, and contributing roughly to 43% to 44% of the nation's GDP, and small firms sustain community character, create jobs, and foster innovation and opportunity across every region of the country. Whereas the state of South Dakota's small business community has been a powerful engine for growth and local opportunity. Small businesses in South Dakota accounted for many of the state's new jobs in the most recent SBA analysis, contributing materially to the state's economic resilience and growth. Whereas Clay County is home to hundreds of employers that provide local jobs, services, and payroll that support families and the county's quality, excuse me, the county's quality of life. With Census Quick Facts reporting approximately 298 employer establishments and several thousand local employees contributing to the county's economy. Whereas Vermillion is a vibrant college town of more than 12,000 residents with hundreds of local businesses, including retail, restaurants, professional services, and small manufacturers that support the University of South Dakota, visitors, and surrounding rural communities, and provide essential goods, services, and employment to the region. Whereas Small Business Saturday is an opportunity to celebrate and support the locally-owned, independently-operated businesses that invest in our neighborhoods, create jobs, and strengthen our sense of community, and whereas residents and visitors are encouraged to shop local, dine local, and use local services on Small Business Saturday to sustain the distinctive businesses that make Vermillion and Clay County unique. Therefore, I, Catherine Heine, manager of the Vermillionary Chamber of Commerce, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Vermillion and throughout Clay County, South Dakota, and urge all citizens to recognize the contributions of our small business owners and to support them through patronage, advocacy, and partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. We have another proclamation for Veterans Day. Joe's not here for, from the Human Relations Commission. If it's okay with the council, he may have thought 7:00 since we changed that. If he shows up, are you guys okay with him stepping in on that? Okay. Moving on, is there any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, we have a public hearing for annual liquor and wine license renewals?
Yes, so each year, the council has the ability to reissue licenses. These are for the liquor and the wine and the packaged liquor licenses. The city council has the ability to renew a license on two criteria, suitable person and suitable location. With respect to the location, licenses have previously been approved for all of these locations. The police chief has prepared a report for the performance of each of the establishments that have liquor or wine licenses during 2025. The fees that are associated with these licenses are $1,500 for on-sale liquor licenses, $500 for retail on-off sale of wine license, and $500 for the off-sale municipal package license. Video lottery machines are also charged $50 per machine. The city council is asked to make a decision on the approval or denial of the renewal of the liquor license, liquor and wine licenses.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, move to council for any discussion. Any discussion by council? Counselor Holland?
I pushed the wrong button. Crystal, no, you have to stay there. I just want to thank you because you put a note in there saying that, don't look at the quantity of incidents as compared to the owners, whether they report them or not. And that's a good point because just because they don't show any doesn't mean they don't occur. They just never were reported. So thank you for the comment, and it was a very, very good report.
Any other questions or comments from the council or motions? Motion to approve all, I assume? Motion to approve all. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Genowine, first by Counselor Murrah. Any other discussion on this? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the invoices payable, the fuel quotes, which I believe is going to be shown on the screen. The resolution authorized the purchase of two police interceptor SUVs for the police department, and a resolution authorized the purchase of one pursuit-rated pickup truck for the police department. That is all on the consent agenda. Is there any items that you would like to discuss on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve by Counselor Cheeseman, and second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Old Business, we have a second reading of ordinance 1543. This is a reference to alcohol beverage licenses and modifying eligible applicants for special alcohol beverage license issued in conjunction with special events.
Thank you. The ordinance change brought forward at this meeting allows for current license holders in the city of Vermillion to hold special daily licenses for special events. This would allow current business owners to use their licenses at an off-premise location for a special event. The second change to the ordinance is allowing on-sale liquor to be sold with special licenses, but only for current liquor license holders. Administration recommends approval of ordinance 1543, and since this is the second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you, Katie. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, any discussion by council? I know we went great lengths in discussing this already, but if there's anything else, or any motions?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve by Counselor Lieber, and a second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote. Nine yays, zero nays. Motion carries. Next item, we have a second reading of ordinance 1546. This is in reference to amend the address for the Vermillion Police Department since it's moving.
Thank you. This is a pretty straightforward ordinance. We had a section in our city code which had the location of our former police department on Washington Street. Now that we are in the new law enforcement center, 1250 Stamford Street, we just need to go in and adjust that section of code so that if some, it provides the address if somebody wants to pay their police, excuse me, their parking ticket, what the location for that is. So we'd recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance 1546. There have been no changes since the first reading. A roll call vote is required with the second reading.
Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for any discussion on this? Motion approved by Counselor Price, is there a second? Second by Counselor Holland. Any other discussion? I think you're kind of stuck with the address we got. Can we deny this? Seeing no other discussion, roll call vote. Tell the post office otherwise.
Yeah.
Nine yays, zero nays. Motion carries. Next item we have is new business. We have an agreement with Clay Union Electric to transfer electric services on the Munger Track. This is in the area of Highway 58 and Highway 19.
Thank you. Back in the August 4th meeting, council approved annexation of what is known as Munger Track 4 into city limits. At that same meeting, you guys approved the notice of intent to inform Clay Union Electric that we would like to purchase the surface territory. On August 5th, that, that notice of intent was delivered to Clay Union and Electric, and the Clay Union acknowledged receipt of that notice of intent on October 21st. They did confirm they have no existing services or infrastructure on the property. They did inform us that they do have some infrastructure just north of this property, but that infrastructure does not need to be relocated or bought out at this time. Because of that, there is no cost for this, this transfer agreement. Transfer date has been agreed to for December 1st. We will be responsible for paying lost revenue payments to any new customers that come into that area following state statute. Once approved, this agreement will be delivered to Clay Union for approval by their board, which is scheduled for later this month. Once we get both, both bodies to approve it, it'll get delivered to the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission where it's finally, finally documented, I guess, that that transfer is through. Electric budget does have funds to cover these expenses. Administration recommends approval of the attached agreement to transfer the electric service territory. Would like to note that I did receive an email from Chris Larson, manager, general manager of Clay Union Electric, and he is in support of this. He couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for any discussion? Any motions?
Second.
Motion to approve by Counselor Murrah, second by Counselor Helwig. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next item, we have the resolution to amend curbside recycling fees.
Thank you. Our curbside recycling collection program began in 2009, and essentially, we have two sources of revenue for this program. One is the fee that's collected from utility bills. The second part of it is, part of the income that is generated on the sale of recyclable materials also goes towards this fund. During our budget meetings in August, we talked a little bit about this. This fund is, it's pretty tight in terms of what we have in there. So what was proposed is to raise the residential monthly collection fee by 10 cents from $3.90 to $4. And then we have about 55, 56, 60 commercial collections that currently pay $1,250 a month. That would go to $13 a month for those. That increase for a full year might bring in just about $3,400. So it's just a little bit more to help us as we balance this program out there. So we'd recommend approval of the resolution adjusting our curbside recycling collection fee. This would be for billings after January 1st of 2026. So the bill that you would receive in January due no later than February 10th of 2026 would include this fee if it is approved.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for any discussion? Any motions?
No.
Motion to approve by Counselor Helwig. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Holland. Any other discussion on this? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to authorize the purchase of a travel car for the administration.
Thank you. So just as a note, I guess, this memo will actually be applying for the three items, item C, items, item D, and item E as well. But as you mentioned, the budget sessions in 2025, the city council did review the 2026 Equipment Replacement Fund. As part of that purchase or the fund, there were several vehicles that were listed to be replaced. The three that are going to be discussed within this memo would be vehicle 110, which is the city manager vehicle. It's a 2023 Chevy Malibu. Vehicle 410, which is a 2014 Ford F-150 that's used by the Light and Power Department, and vehicle 970, which is a 2015 Ford Ford 4x4 F-150, which is used for the, by the solid waste recycling department at the landfill. The first two that I mentioned are actually within the Equipment Replacement Fund, and the last one, the solid waste department vehicle, is actually within their fund, the joint fund with the city of Yankton and the county of Yankton and Clay County. There are several ways that the city has, in the past, has purchased vehicles. All of these are dictated by statute. They're all listed within the memo. Typically, we do avoid writing specs for these by utilizing other bids that have already been awarded. One of these would be the bid for the state. As with other years, staff, when we look at bids from the state bids, we do like to contact the local dealers to see if they can match or offer a price for the same vehicle. We have listed on the, on the memo table for these three vehicles. The one for administration, we're looking into purchasing a new Chevy Equinox. The state bid was $28,231. The bid or quote from Jerry's Chevrolet GMC is for $29,837. Vermillion Ford obviously did not bid that one. Light and Power, they would be getting one 2025, 2026 4x4 Chevy Silverado. The state bid for this vehicle is $43,015. Jerry's bid was $43,799. And finally, the solid waste vehicle, it's a 2025, 2026 4x4 Chevy Silverado crew cab. The state bid for this vehicle was $42,808, whereas Jerry's Chevrolet quote was for $44,349. With regards to the vehicles in the Equipment Replacement Fund, the one for the Chevy Equinox, we had budgeted $23,212. And then for the Light and Power pickup truck, we had budgeted $25,916. When added together and compared to the bids that we received for those vehicles, the Equipment Replacement Fund would be short, roughly speaking, $24,508. Unless savings are achieved with the purchase of other vehicles, Equipment Replacement Fund will have to be adjusted during the budget review session in 2026. As far as solid waste recycling pickup truck, the budget for that is $60,000. So there's going to be plenty of money in the fund for that one purchase. Administration recommends that the city council review the prices on direct staff to purchase vehicles from the desired vendor. In this instance, purchasing all three vehicles from the local vendor will cost the city an additional $3,931 when compared to the state bid. The city council will need to approve each individual resolution for the purchase of vehicles mentioned in this memo for agenda items C through E.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion. Just like Jose mentioned, this is covering items C, D, and E, and we'll have to do a motion for each one of them. Is there any questions? Counselor Toller?
We're replacing a 2023 vehicle for administration, so...
Yeah, it was a good point of clarification. It's a great question, Mr. Toller, because it's moving from that fund to another fund. It has about a 15-year life in the organization. So that particular car starts out in the administration role, and then it moves to become travel car number one, then it moves to become travel car number two, then it moves to the police department, and finally, it goes to the airport. So it appears as if it's being replaced. It is going to be a new vehicle acquired, but there's a domino effect. So it usually is with us about 15 years before it leaves the organization. It's just works its way through the chain. And that pickup that's 11 years old is going to be going from Light and Power to the, to the engineering department. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. So right now, we do have a vehicle 210, which is a 2007 pickup truck that was replaced 12 years after we purchased it, and we've kept it since then. So yeah, typically, the only vehicle that, that wouldn't be going through something like that would be the solid waste department vehicle. And even that, it's 10 years old, and, and those vehicles at the landfill do have a tough life just because of the environment that they're in. They're up and down the embankment pretty often, and they're not, it's not an easy place to work at.
Thank you. Just for some background, so obviously Vermillion Ford couldn't bid on these because these are all Chevy products. Vermillion Ford typically matches the state bid. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah. So the ones that were in the consent agenda?
Correct.
All of those vehicles were Ford in the state bid, and when they were, as you can see, you do have the memo for those three vehicles prior discussed, I guess, in the consent. They were all matched by Vermillion Ford.
I guess, and we asked Jerry's if they would match, and obviously, they weren't able to.
Correct.
I guess I just lean in, in being responsible with the money, and I get, I get Katie's shop local aspect of it. We have a business that's able to do that, matching the bid. The other one doesn't. It doesn't seem fair, I think, when we ask that, and they match the bid, for us to turn around and go to Jerry's and say, oh, you can match, but we're still going to give you the business. To me, it's a slap in the face to Vermillion Ford, in my opinion, in, in doing that. So I'm inclined to go with the state bid on wherever that is matched, not to mention that's going to save the city roughly $4,000. That's my opinion. Anybody else want to speak? Counselor Toller?
Do we know where that state bid is through?
Yep. So I do have it in the memo. So the travel vehicle or the, the city admin, city manager's vehicle, that's from Lamb Chevy out of Oneida, and the other two pickup trucks would be for, from Beck Motors out of Pier.
Out of where, I'm sorry?
Pier.
So the only cost to us is also to go get that, or is that built into the state bid?
It's actually built into it. There's a delivery fee to Vermillion.
Counselor Price?
So you mentioned that Vermillion Ford often matches. Has Jerry's been given, like, the opportunity to match if they?
In the past?
Or with this, if we could say, match the state price and?
So the way that, the way that we do this is that we have, we can get very quickly the state bid for the vehicle. And then, once we have that with all the options, we take it to whichever dealer, and then we tell them, hey, we want this Equinox, and these are all the options that it comes with. This is any add-ons that we want. This is the price, including the delivery cost. Can you match it or do better than that? So yeah, they're given everything that, whatever we gave to Jerry's, we also gave to Ford, I guess. Different brands, obviously, but yeah.
Is there any other discussions or motions at all? Counselor Cheeseman?
I guess I would be inclined to go with that state bid as well. I know that they're going to make money on the state bid too, and that it just doesn't seem right to not have those two match, especially when Ford came out and matched that bid.
Any other discussion? Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yeah. Motion to accept the state.
Motion to accept the state bid. Is there a second?
We have to do one at a time.
Oh, sorry, you're at?
Oh, it's on, on the Equinox.
On the administration vehicle for the Equinox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Lieber. Any other discussion on the administration vehicle? All's in favor for the administration vehicle for the state bid, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Light and power vehicle. Is there a motion on that one?
Move approval of the state bid for item D.
Motion to approve the state bid for item D, which would be the Light and Power Truck, by Counselor Price. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cheeseman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. And then the last one is the solid waste vehicle. Is there any other discussion on that? And just to clarify, that is a joint bill from Yankton and us, then?
Yeah.
So how do?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it comes out of the joint powers.
But it's our bill.
It's our bill, so we get to say where it's bought from. Yankton doesn't say that.
No, Yankton doesn't have a say in it.
Okay. That's why I was a little confused. All right. Is there any motions for the solid waste vehicle?
Motion to approve item C.
You mean E?
E.
Motion to approve the, item E, which is a solid waste truck for the state bid, by Counselor Cheeseman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Genowine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on, the next item is the agreement with AMS Building Systems for repairs to the floor at the Lyons Park restroom facility. Mr. Gobler?
Thank you. In 2015, the city of Vermillion began renovations at Lyons Park Campground. They consisted of removing the old restroom and an unworking dump, waste dump station. This allowed the city to build a new restroom facility, which included showers, which we thought would be beneficial for the use at the campground. Just to go to note, the Lyons Park restroom is not only used for the campground, but it's also the only restroom in the area for the playground users and for people who use the armory softball fields or 4-H fields adjacent to it. In 2019, grant money, land water conservation fund money was secured as well as money that was budgeted by the city and city council to continue with the enhancements at the campground. In spring of 2024, the Lyons Campground and adjacent amenities reopened to campers. Over the past two years, there's been some acts of vandalism that have taken place within that facility, mainly pertaining to the floor. The floor was damaged by some type of material that was pushed through. Underneath the floor is a crawl space, so this is a hollow space underneath. But it was pushed through so that it damaged not only the tile, but the subflooring as well. Both times that we had the vandalism, the floors were professionally repaired, and we thought we were good with it. However, we believe that there may have been some water damage to the subflooring that was not seen by us and/or the contractor that fixed the floors. This past summer, city staff discovered numerous weak spots throughout the facility floor. Staff monitored the facility throughout the summer, and in late June, multiple areas of the floor were found to be damaged. AMS Construction here out of Vermillion was contacted to investigate the floor. They discovered that the floor had unreparable water damage compromising the strength of the entire floor of the facility. Structurally, staff recommends that this restroom facility should not be reopened to the public until the damage is repaired. AMS was the only local contractor offered to look at and repair this facility. Financial considerations for this, the cost estimate, which was included in your packet, came in at roughly $34,163. A copy of the code, like I said, was included. What we're asking for is the right to go into a contract to get these repairs done at the Lyons Park Campground so we can have it open by the end of next season. Since the extent of the damage was unknown when we did the budget this year, it was not included in the 2026 budget. Therefore, the budget would need to be revised to accommodate for this expense. Administration recommends entering into a contract with AMS Building and Construction here in Vermillion to repair the floor of the Lyons Park Campground Facility. Questions?
Before any questions, are there any comments from the visitors to be heard? Seeing none, council? Counselor Holland?
Jim, are we replacing the floor with cement?
Yes. It would be a ported place like a, almost a shower base. It would be a ported place, like a, almost a shower basin where it's poured. So it would be concrete, just straight flush concrete that would have rebar in it, so it would be impervious to hopefully to the water and/or the damage that occurred previously in that facility.
The next question was, with these repairs, do we make it less vulnerable to vandalism?
Yeah, that's, that's the game plan with it. When the facility was built, it was built by another local construction company here that's not in business anymore, but they used a tile floor. It looked really nice, but it just doesn't handle the traffic and possibility of vandalism that could have occurred, and it showed.
So I read that they were replacing the commodes as well?
No, we will not have to do that. Some of the plumbing might have to be readjusted or looked at. AMS built that into the contract there, not the contract, but to the quote, that says that there may be some other things, but they did kind of cover everything they possibly could have, unless there's something, once they start doing the repairs, that they find that wasn't included, would have to upcharge a little bit.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions in the council? Any other? Motion approved by Counsel Holland, is there a second? Second by Counsel Lieber. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next item, we have a city manager's report.
Thank you. Just a note on three meetings that we have before your next city council meeting on Monday, November seventeenth. Coming up this Thursday, November sixth, at five-thirty in the Memura Conference Room, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting. Next Monday, November tenth, at five-thirty in the Powell Conference Room, the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet, and that'll be to consider conditional use permit for the veterinary clinic that's been proposed at three oh six Bower Street. And then finally, the Historic Preservation Commission meets on Wednesday, November twelfth. That's at nine AM in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. Just a reminder that city offices will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, for Veterans Day. That's all that I have.
Well, sure. That is all on the agenda. Is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Counsel Murra, a second by Counsel Lieber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Meeting adjourned.